All right, we're back from executive sessions. We're in the wins, no action taken. I have the Director of Emergency Management, Gary.
We've got the revised agreement with NexTech for three computers down in my office. Like I mentioned last week, it went down a good amount of money for each monthly, and this will mirror the 43-month that the current county building is on, so. And they added the stuff that they wanted to, so.
Did her motion to sign that contract, enter in that contract?
So.
Second, all in favor? Close, same sign, motion carries.
And then Saturday, we will be covering Riley County in the morning. It's, I think, 9:30, I'll have 117, the pumper, and then Grass Attack Truck, 113, probably six or seven guys and myself will be over there covering, so.
That's nice that you guys are doing that.
That's all I've got today for that.
And then, Betsy, you had some changes in our indigent contract?
Yes, there were some scheduling things going on, and. One of the contracts for the sink and the mistamirs, they weren't able to fill it, so we're gonna fill the sink. With all the pumplin' off early and the rest of the mistamirs for the mistletoe arms.
Do I hear a motion to accept those two changes on the indigent contract? Second, all in favor? Close, same sign, motion carries.
You said sink with all, all to help in the mistamirs with who?
And all the pumplin' off early and that. And that replaces the contract that. The gentleman from Salina signed up for.
Yeah, no money changes, just the people, correct?
Yeah, we're still within budget.
Yeah.
I mean. We're still within budget.
So a guy from Salina's not doing anything?
No.
Check people. What we're doing.
Well, I don't see anybody here for public comment, so. Or are you here for public comment? Well, then you can come on up.
You want Crystal over here?
Oh, yeah.
She's just watching.
Let me get Crystal. Text her.
Well, thank you for allowing the CBB to come before you today. And you know who I am, and you know our board chairman. So we'll just move our lawn. The CBB is currently out of plastic bags. As you all know, the bags used for welcome bags, soldier briefing, trade shows, special events, et cetera. I've sought bids for 10,000 bags, size would be seventeen and a half in length by fifteen width, which is a good size. And I received three bids, as you can see, and recommending consolidated printing as the low bidder for an amount of $4,788. We do have Key Office supply a little bit higher, so if you want to stay local, I'm fine with that, too.
Well, if you add the.
I added the 288 to consolidated, which brought to 4,788.
Yeah, so there's only a 300 dollar difference to go local. I would prefer to go local.
Go local, okay.
Yeah.
So we'll award the bid to Key Office. Thank you very much.
It's just a small.
I understand, I agree, too.
Actually, you might ask them if they take that, take the consolidated was.
Okay.
Rather stay local.
Okay. All right.
Key Office pays a lot for.
Okay. Second thing we're gonna talk about is Conza Prairie. We're trying, we're currently working with Conza Prairie on partnership, and one of those partnerships involves the placement of I-70 signage, and they have to have a letter from my DMO, which is a destination marketing organization, which would be us, and I thought it'd be a little more powerful to add the commission and our office. So I'll just go over this really quickly. Gary County Commission, the Gary County Convention group, they're all are trying to express their strong support for the installation of directional exit signs for Conza Prairie on I-70. This iconic natural landmark located in Gary and Riley County offers visitors a unique opportunity to experience the beauty and ecological significance of the floodhills of the Great Plains. Directional exit signs would significantly enhance visibility of Conza Prairie to travelers on I-70, attracting more visitors to this remarkable destination. Conza Prairie is a vital resource for scientific research, education, conservation. By increasing visitation, we can raise the awareness of its importance and inspire future generations to protect this precious natural heritage. We urge you to prioritize the installation of this directional sign and to allocate the necessary resources to make it a reality. The Conza Prairie exit signs should be placed for a McDowell Creek Exit Number 307. Thank you for your time. So what I'm asking for is that our chairperson, Commissioner Giudon, to sign, and then I'll get our chairperson to sign and submit it to Travel and Tourism.
Is there anywhere we can put this on the letterhead?
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's great to do that, but I'd like.
I'll send it to you.
Send it, and then we can get it. They can use my stamp, so. I think it'll look nicer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Freedom Fest is our next thing, and I have the Freedom Fest coordinator here to maybe say a few words before we do our presentation.
If that's all right. Rick and me have been talking a little bit about Freedom Fest and what the impact is to the city. I know that both of you know what it is, I know that you've been around it forever. And I'd just like to remind people the mission of it when I moved into town, you know, 2002, was to have a celebration for the community, that it was a highlight to the community, for everything they do during the course of the year has a governmental body, yours and the city, of giving back a little bit to the community. That's kind of what the mission was when it started in the coming back into the city, and I think it's done well. Freedom Fest has taken over, for whatever reason it has, and that's the only event there's gonna be currently that I know of on the Fourth of July time. And. We've been in talks a little bit, we have three events now that we do. You know, two of them are trying to fund things for the Fourth. We do the balloon fest that happens out at the airport in May, Mudball's back going again in June, and then the Fourth of July event. Everything costs more, I know you guys know that for sure. We do use, all three events, we use motels in towns, we, you know, try to pull people in from outside, although that is not our number-one mission, to pull people from outside, our number-one is to celebrate here. Our number-two is to pull people into Junction City as a signature event, as not a city has it. And we're trying, and we've all battled this, especially those of the police firm before, the image of Junction City. And this is just, what a way to celebrate Junction City, Gary County, and our area. Every Nate will talk, every place he goes with the state legislature stuff, people talk about, and have come to that event, how great it is, and they're surprised that we do something like that, which kind of offends me a little bit that they say that, but it's great that they do. So with that being said, Rick and me have talked about what it does and how we can promote it more, and that's what we're here supporting or doing with Rick today. And Rick and I have worked together in the past a lot. And I know that, you know, it's on the police firm, I mean, our best interest and our hardest, this community, and that's what we're trying to do. Be open to any questions or. Now I'll turn it over to Rick.
What, is it just going up 5,000 from what you gave us? What did?
I don't know what they gave, but I've requested it'll be known as Gary County Day at Freedom Fest, and we'll actually on that day set up a big Gary County display and really kind of work it a lot for our marketing materials also, I'll be out there. And one new thing that we're gonna do hopefully this year is to survey people, actually have hard surveys, so we can come to you and actually report what the economic impact is versus just guessing. So we're asking for $15,000 a one-time payment to Freedom Fest for 2025. It's about double if I remember right.
Yeah, I think it was 7,500 was last year.
It's just getting tougher and tougher, as you all know, to raise that money. I think we're in a position to help them out, and it's a good event, so that's a great event.
And I guess if we're cutting back on the travel this next year, you know, we'd have some savings there.
Oh, a lot more than saving.
I don't have a problem with it.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the request of 15,000 for Freedom Fest for 2025 from the CBB. And then Gary County Day Freedom Fest.
Second, I do think it's a, I think that's a great idea, to do that and cover everything that we have to offer in the community. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the hardest thing you have to do all week?
I understand. Next thing I want to cover with you is what's called the I-70 associations. I'm of the belief that you don't belong in groups and associations just to say you belong, that there has to be a two-way value, we provide value, they provide value. I recently went to a I-70 meeting and was kind of upset by what I heard. They are paying a lady from Iowa $12,000, almost $12,500 to come down to visit every community along I-70, and you get one Facebook post, and you get 10 photos, and I tell you, are you kidding? And they weren't kidding. And I think our membership of 3,200, 3,500 would be better spent by the CBB versus just giving it to them and participating in things like this. I'll just read this. "It did not take me long to realize our money can be spent more effectively by our CBB and not by the I-70 group. In 2025, the I-70 group is paying $12,120 to a person from Iowa to conduct a 17-day social media road trip along I-70. When I checked the person's social media, it was not impressive. The person has 1,505 Facebook followers, we have over 10,000, and 3,423 Instagram followers. For the money, you get one Facebook post, 10 photos with the option to purchase more, a blog post on her Facebook, and other small offerings. If the person spends a night in our community, then we're responsible also for the lodging and meals. We do need to keep our membership of the North Central Kansas Tourism Group, but this group charging us 3,250 is just not worth it as far as I was concerned." And Kansas Tourism now recognizes the tourism groups in those, North Central, North. So you have to belong to those for Kansas to work with you, we do belong to that. But these other groups, I've been told, such as Meet Kansas, it's folding. That was the bus tour thing, they're folding up because there's no business. And I think a lot of the groups and associations that have been around for 20, 30 years have kind of maxed their viability out, and now, just like what they're doing, they're gonna bring in somebody who really has no value in fact. I have her charge sheet here, and I'll give you a good example by her sheet. If you want, besides that one Facebook post, if you want a second Facebook post while they're here, that'll be another $150. If you want an Instagram post, that's $215. And if you'd like her to write an article for your community, that's $925. I just think it's just, somebody just, so I believe, you know, our money's, like I said, better spent by this CBB and by this county versus just giving it to an association that's really kind of struggling. So I just wanted to bring that to you.
What else does I-70 Association do?
And who all, who all belong?
The community's along I-70.
I mean, a lot of them, or?
Oh, yeah, I mean Manhattan and also Compton, though not around I-70 or belonging, but they just.
Does that belong?
They do. They all belong to it, but I'm looking at the.
When is, when is our?
It'll be coming out in January. And like I said, I have nothing against association, but I just, I just feel our money is better spent by, you know, collaborating here. I think Commissioner Asher, your question was a good question, and I just, this is what they do, they.
I really didn't know, even over the years, I didn't know.
Yeah. They hold a lot of meetings.
Talk about what? The I-70?
Yes, so. We talked about it, yes we did, and I can certainly go back to them before we pay anything.
Yeah, I'd like you to talk to them.
Okay. We'll do, okay. Okay, we're almost done here. I am bidding bids, this morning I met with K-State Printing, because they offer all printing. I've gotten two bids so far for our visitor guide. I'm also working, I've got it half-done. And so the next meeting, I'd like to present you with the bids and then hopefully make a decision on that. State Park has reported their visitation for 2024 so far. They're reporting numbers of 308,810. I'm waiting on the core, I haven't got theirs yet, but that's really a good number. Then the last thing, I got a call this morning, a return to call, made a call. I found out, discovered that the Gary County CBB has already paid their money for the Omaha Sports Show, it's been paid. I don't need no help or anything, one person can work that show, you don't need to take two or three, and just like all these other shows, but I need permission to make a hotel reservation for myself. I don't need anybody else, and I don't know if I'm allowed to go.
When is it?
It's in February, about the middle of February. But again, I.
And how long is it?
It's four days, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. I go there on Thursday that morning, set up the morning, have the show that afternoon. I'm not going on Wednesday or anything, it's not that long.
Yeah.
So I just need permission. Okay, thank you, okay. And I'll work with Crystal on that. And let me again say in front of you and everybody watching, what a great support team I have, especially with Crystal, I mean, just great support team.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Any questions for me?
I appreciate you stepping up and taking care of this. Trying to figure out what's going on.
We're certainly trying to. Anything else for me?
No. And thanks for bringing this stuff and asking ahead of time.
Oh, certainly, it's, I don't want to force you to do that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Crystal, I'll send you that one.
Once I have her signature on it, I'll scan it in and send it to you. Put that in color, it'll be perfect. Just so you guys know, he's doing a good job of keeping me informed as to where he's away, whether it's work-related or personal. I check his time every week and make sure he's got 40 hours, and.
Thank you for taking that.
He does a really good job communicating. No, I have no issues with him.
And that was my point?
Thank you.
It's communication.
Yeah.
Excellent, excellent. Even if nothing changes, he's just letting me know that nothing's changed since the last time I told you where I'd be this week. A reminder, don't forget to stop by my office and get those applications.
Yes.
Okay, I got minutes. And I sent you, the 21st of August, because that was a special meeting and I hadn't run those through yet. Keith had a couple of changes on the time for the executive session and grammatical error.
So I make a motion to approve those minutes?
Well, I just wanna, we need to figure out which meeting it was that the motion was made that we were gonna require the city to provide detailed.
I'll read those minutes, it wasn't in this one. I told her, I went back and.
Yeah, I'd ask you to look, and yeah, so we need to figure out which one it was, because we made a specific one that said we were gonna have them.
To send the documents?
Yes.
Okay, so I rescind that motion then until we find out?
Well, it's not this one, so we can.
Oh, we can.
Yeah, because it wasn't this one, she went back and specifically looked, but there was one that we did. Second, all in favor? Post, the post, same sign, motion carries.
And then I have December the 2nd. I spelled Asher wrong, oh shucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, why'd I do that? Trish, I don't think you had a change date, do you?
Yeah, I thought I did.
Oh, maybe you said something about being in red.
I'll use a look and see where I sent you. Yeah, usually you send me back, thank you.
Yeah, I spread this.
Oh, for the fireworks thing?
Oh, yeah, the proposed fee is $500.
Yeah, we're doing, yeah, that's what the proposed fee is, it went from 100 to 500.
Okay, so I'll add that.
Down on the CBB, on the first thing, HR is helping the CBB until they get a new.
Yeah, okay, I'll change that, and then.
And then when we were talking about in the staff meeting about.
The public wants the.
Yeah, it was brought by a member of the public that the owl is not under department head meetings, and the department said, no, it shouldn't be.
Okay, I'll get that changed.
All right.
Oh, if those changes, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from December 2nd.
Second, all in favor? Aye, posting, same, motion carries.
Thank you.
You know, when we were talking earlier about, you know, the wind farm things, I guess there were people that put in, like, some of these smaller counties, people were donating a bunch of money to specific commissioners, like over $20,000 for commissioner campaigns. Yes, isn't that crazy?
I know, like, that kind of thing going on in Dickis County.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And then in one of the sessions that we had, they talked about how, you know, what you should do if there is a wind farm and what to expect when they start, you know, putting it up, the maintenance or the building of it, and how it tears up the roads, and they said if possible, don't let, don't ever let them on any paved roads, county roads, keep them on the gravel because it's easier to fix.
Hello?
We're gonna have to go back and look at the other motions when we talked about the cities and the EMS, because it wasn't in that one.
Yeah, it wasn't in this one, I've listened to it twice or three times. And I remember, I think it was in a regular meeting.
Because I know I specifically said, so you mean.
Yeah, you did, and it's in the minutes, but I'll have to go back and read.
It might have been just the one right before that then, because.
Yeah.
Because then we finished it up after we got a number.
Right.
So it might just be that one. Then we come up and see.
Did you watch any of the NCAA volleyball tournament?
Yeah, so.
Five upsets?
That's what I was gonna say, that was quite a deal. I thought K-State or KU will pull it out.
Yeah.
I mean, you go five games, that's pretty good.
There were three of them that went five games like that, and that they ended up being upsets, so. Yeah. After SMU beat Nebraska, I'd have thought they'd have got, and they ended up getting beat.
Yeah.
Who did?
SMU. They beat Nebraska earlier on.
Yeah, I watched that.
And I think they also beat Pitt, which is the number one team. And then they got beat the other day from the war. And then KU got beat by Florida Gators. And that was an upset.
Watched the Rams Bill, Bills game. They almost upset it too.
Mm-hmm. Louisville almost got beat.
You never know.
Have you been watching the Kent State volleyball or basketball?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I want them to play somebody that's more difficult for me because sometimes I can beat them fifty points. That doesn't do any good.
Or seventy, didn't they make it to a hundred, less than a hundred and something like that?
Fourteen, yeah.
Twenty points or something. I don't know why they are playing teams like that.
I know, yeah, I don't think that's helping them get into Big Twelve.
I thought it said we had y'all named that wise yet, because I ain't been there in my, I don't know.
On July twenty-second. Commissioner Asher moved to accept the city of Junction City's offer and pay up to a maximum of a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars per month under joint resolution, blah, blah, blah. Then, uh, the consensus, the commission is to work things out between the two entities. The county still needs to see all EMS bills and supporting documents. Chairman Giavano said there's been mistakes made on the bill in the floor and the average bill for January, February, March, blah, blah, blah. That's, that's twenty twenty-four's.
Blah, blah, blah.
Uh, yeah, it's twenty-four, yeah.
Got five minutes.
Hmm?
You got five minutes.
Hmm. It was at twelve-thirty.
Oh, it was at twelve-thirty. It is at twelve-thirty.
Yeah. Well, I guess, you know, I don't think David's gonna be here, but Caleb is still supposed to come, as of this morning.
Hi.
Cheers.
We're ready for you.
Oh, okay. Sorry, we were tracking, uh, twelve forty-five. Tom, ready? Um, I'm Deputy K nine Kayla DeJau with the Gary County Sheriff's Office. Um, I also do, I am the Vice President for the Gary County Community Involvement Team, which is a nonprofit organization completely separate from the sheriff's office. It's a volunteer basis. Um, basically, our goal is to, is to do community outreach. Usually just directly evolved, evolving around, like, in children, education for the Gary County's youth, um, as well as involvement within the community and outreach so they can get to know law enforcement, our law enforcement partners, being the Gary County Sheriff's Office, as well as getting, just spreading knowledge and say, like, safety, such as bicycle safety, Halloween safety, uh, alcohol safety, like, you know, DUI education, stuff like that.
I'm Detective Tom Harley with the Sheriff's Office. I'm also the Secretary for the CIT team as well. Um, like Deputy DeJau said, we do tons of different community events with the kids to, um, kind of bridge a gap, see us in a different light than just as a police officer for the community. Show them what we do, because a lot of the kids are curious what we do and, um, every time they, we're at events with our cars and stuff, they wanna climb on everything, but, um, we do multiple events up in Milford, here in Junction City, but our biggest thing is Camp Shield that we do every year, um, with the kids out in Rock Springs, and every year we've grown, at least since I've been part of this, um, and that's what we're hoping to do, is to continue to grow it, um. We have lots of kids who are interested, more and more, uh, come up to us and, uh, they hear about it from other kids who have gone to it, and I was at the middle school last week and, uh, covering for, uh, the BEES SRO, and three kids came back like, hey, can we go to camp again this year? And they're super excited about it. Um, and our plan is to kind of grow that to, um, other schools in areas right outside of, uh, Gary County, because we have kids who go to Chapman, who also live in Gary County, as well as looking at potentially, uh, Clay County with them and not having as many resources to kind of see if they would like to kind of partner up with us too and grow this, because, uh, it's super fun. We have fun. I, it, it gets us out of our element a little bit too and helps these kids do the same.
Basically, the goal of Camp Shield and the idea behind it is to get kids who don't have the opportunities, a hundred percent free for the kids and their families. Like, families don't pay anything, the kids don't, and it's absolutely covered by the community involvement team. Like I said, which is a nonprofit. We basically, all of our funding comes from, um, just fundraisers we do. Uh, like last year, this year, we had the idea for the Christmas float, which we were successful and this, by winning that, thank you. Um, by winning that, that's gonna go directly towards Camp Shield to do something special for the kids. Um, but during Camp Shield, we have, our counselors are all either, they're volunteers, um, with, that are with the community involvement team embedded already through the community involvement team, or ninety percent of them are deputies who volunteer their time to try and better service the community. Um, basically, what we do with the kids is we get, well, last year, we have, we tried to go for about twenty-five kids. We're trying to expand to even more, like we said. Um, but with that being said, we also are trying to take those kids and put them in situations that are more difficult by growing, like, leadership situations. So do we do, like, the high ropes course for the kids, so they understand, kind of coming out of their comfort zone of things that they usually won't have the opportunity to see and experience, but also to learn leadership skills, um, team development skills, and basic, just overall life skills of just working with people that they don't know. It's outside of their comfort zone, as well as learning and developing, um, some basic stuff, like with, uh, life, like wildlife education. Um, we like to make sure that they go back out instead of, there's no screens allowed, so they're, they're not allowed to be on their phones, they're not allowed to have, we don't have computers. We'll do a movie night when there'll be, you know, once, at least once during the, the entire camp, but ninety percent of the camp is completely screen-free. Um, we push the kids to go outside and go out and, uh, interact with, they, like, in a stream study where they were able to catch and study crawd ads and understand what they do and stuff like that, where youth today don't get to experience anymore. Um, there's also leadership games, um, as well as education, and the reason that we are asking from the alcohol fund is because we've done it yearly with, I don't know, it's supposed to be, what, every year long? Every year? We haven't done that. We're kind of underneath new, like, I'm new to the community involvement team. As of last year, I kind of started taking it over and trying to expand it, trying to get more involved with the community. Um, and it was my understanding that we hadn't approached the county commission, and we haven't spoken to you guys about what we do. And I think that's something that we needed to do.
Sure.
Um, so with the drug and alcohol fund, I do know that, um, we do, uh, do the education for DUI education. We also do, like, narcotics education to where they understand the importance of staying away from it, understand what the, what, how, how it can hurt them, harm them in any way, shape, or form. Um, we also do education such as, like I said, with, like, the helmet safety and stuff like that, which trying to start from the bottom with our community's youth, that way it kind of grows and we get, we're better the community that way.
So, um, first of all, I want to tell you, I've seen you guys, and you guys do a great job. You're out there constantly, and I saw the, the float. Uh, Jael was at the market this weekend and, and, um, and you guys have really stepped up your game, so good job on that.
Thanks.
Um, I, we did go out there one time for the Camp Shield, uh, for lunch, and I had a good time. The kids really enjoyed it, and so I really appreciate what you're doing. Um, as far as, uh, why are we asking for it now for, uh, the camp for, in the summer, I guess? Is that one of my questions?
Yeah, um, basically, what my understanding is, is a once-a-year thing. Um, we're prepping for the summer camp, so we do have to start, we're, since we haven't asked for it the past few years.
Yeah.
And our fundraisers, I mean, like I said, they're not, they're not huge, you know, it's small amounts that we get in, and without having that drug and alcohol fund, since we haven't asked for it for a couple of years, we're down to, like, this would probably be our last camp if we didn't get the assistance from the county. We're trying to step up a little bit more with more stuff, but like I said, we're all pretty busy and we're trying to do our best.
So, since you've asked, the last time you've asked, we've had, um, uh, finance policies put in place.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and because you guys are a, um, an outside entity, uh, five oh one C three, there's appropriation process. And, um, and so we're gonna have to start doing that because we can't treat you any different than we do the other appropriations that we do. So, um, and, and so right now, um, I, I would like for you, because we ask, we have a, a form that we fill out, that's just the way I feel, I, I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's, it's false.
The same way, we, you know, we should treat everybody the same, and, and because you guys are an outside entity, asking for an appropriation, this is what we, we require of everybody, um, whether it's alcohol fund or, um, levy funds, um, you know, uh, so, um, because we require a budget on what, what you're gonna need, um, and if twenty-five thousand dollars lasted you for a few years or two years, I think, right, well, is it something that you have to ask? That full amount right now, I guess, is what my, 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 uh, question would be.
Yeah, so, um, as of right now, the camp, so Camp Shield we've been dealing with, we would go through Rock Springs.
Yeah.
Um, so the kids stay at a camp at Rock Springs. We did find a facility that, um, better suits the target of what we're trying to do with the education of the kids when they're not doing activities that are provided by Rock Springs. We do things like with working, we're trying to start working with Game Ward and stuff like that. So this new building that we have, that we found, it's a little bit more expensive, but also we don't have to fight with getting and maintaining, like, that, that building. Um, the past couple of years, we've kind of had issues with, we'd lock in a building, and then we'd be, get told we're, we're having to switch buildings, so now we're kind of shuffling kids around. Um, we have to worry about building security, obviously, making sure that the kids stay in there, that we have enough counselors, so we don't, you know, kids don't roam around. We don't have unexpected guests that are trying to come in, stuff like that. So there, we have to be pretty specific when it comes to what buildings we use, and this one happens to be the one that will be best for the entirety of the program. Um, so that one's a little bit more expensive. We've also kind of been dealing with, um, expenses just as the economy, just kind of going up. Um, so the, this year, we're looking at budgeted about seventeen thousand, that's gonna cost for us to be able to run the camp successfully with the kids. Um, that's, we're trying to do better to cut it down if we can through having to pay through Rock Springs by, um, doing our own meals. We're gonna have, they're gonna, kids will eat breakfast at Rock Springs, but we're reaching out to communities and businesses within the community, members of the communities, if they would like to donate a meal, like a lunch or dinner, to the program to be able to help with the kids.
Yeah, and that kind of offsets that cost for that other building, so.
Um, with that, the drug and alcohol fund, it, it covers ninety percent of the camp, but also the rest of those funds we use for when we go to do, like, operate, like, the, say, ops, Operation Sand Up in Milford. We'll use it for, um, our education pamphlets, wherever we go, like, for touch of trucks.
So we'll need a budget for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then also, um, and, and I'm willing to do this for this year, but what, but also we need to do this the correct way, because normally, like, if you're gonna ask for money for twenty-five, then you'd have to, in the spring, is when we, you normally would fill out, and then during the budget process is when we approve the appropriations. And so you're gonna have to think about that for both this year, that you're doing for twenty-five, and then twenty-six, because you're gonna have to be able to be on, on the appropriation list for twenty twenty-six budget when we do that in the summertime.
Okay.
So, um, you can work with Tammy on that, um, and then we can, um, go from there.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah.
I enjoy it again out there. Thanks for the invitation, and you guys invited us. Um, and I remember the first one I went to was out at, uh, out at Milford. And I can't remember how long.
Oh, that was the COVID, the year we. Oh, that was the COVID, the year we had COVID, so we had to change it, and we did it out at, oh, yeah, we had to do the Milford.
And it's gonna be, it's gonna be earlier this year, too, it's gonna be the week after Memorial Day, so it'll be a little cooler, so that would be nice.
Yeah, and before people start home on vacation, so that would be nice, yeah.
So how many days is it, yeah?
So it's gonna, it goes, this year's from Wednesday to Sunday, I believe.
And the kids stay with us the whole time, so.
Right.
Yeah, but Tammy will get you all the appropriation paperwork and what's needed, and then, um, we'll go from there.
Okay, sorry. Just to make sure I'm clear, you want them to, um, are you wanting to do this for the twenty-five year, since twenty-four's, like, almost over? Well, yeah, if we, we get the paperwork from them, you would maybe approve this for the twenty-five year?
Yeah, because we can.
And then, when they, we'll also want them to go ahead and do it again.
For the twenty-six, so they don't have to come back in the middle, yeah.
So, like, as soon as they can get the documents in, then they can bring them in, and we can look at a payment right away in twenty-five.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yep.
Yeah, did I not, I'm, I hope that I explained that, but.
I just wanted to make.
I just wanted to tell you that, you know, you're gonna ask for it this year right away, and then have to ask again right away, like, right after that, for the next year, so we're on, so then you guys will be on the schedule, and but you still have to yearly fill out that appropriations, uh, request.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else that you got?
This was contract.
G I, uh, A U, and if you're kind of sure. You got anything? And then she's our trainer.
She's, yeah, she's our.
You said she was, other words.
We're here.